Bienvenidos a todos, muy contento de que estéis aquí. La razón por la que estoy aquí es para acoger a Nita Fortson y comenzar este foro. Pero lo más importante, solo quería contar un poco de la historia de estos estudiantes y ASU. He estado involucrada con ellos durante mucho tiempo. Y lo que te diré, si te subestimas, estás cometiendo un error. Porque estos niños son extremadamente dedicados, y han sido dedicados durante mucho tiempo. Y lo que tienden a hacer es entregarse. Y esta entrega causa que la gente escuche y reconozca lo que hacen. Y te diré en los últimos días, y la noche pasada estuvimos aquí hasta las 11. Estos niños, estos estudiantes, estos jóvenes, hombres y mujeres, me disculpo. Soy madre, eso es el lado de la madre, solo para que sepáis, porque los amo a la muerte. Pero estuvieron aquí hasta las 11 de la noche pasada y el día anterior. Y literalmente investigando y decidiendo qué problemas eran más importantes para ellos, qué problemas eran importantes para ellos, y cómo íbamos a hacer las preguntas. Así que no quiero estar aquí demasiado tiempo, pero probablemente puedo estar aquí para siempre durante un día y hablar y darles todos los acolajes que pueda pensar. Realmente quiero que toméis esto, y como podéis ver el foro, la forma en que se ha configurado. Uno de los candidatos incluso se ha aludido al hecho de que esto es tan genial que incluso nos están alimentando esta noche. Y mi punto de vista para hacerlo es que van hasta los detalles más pequeños. Así que sin más preámbulos, quiero presentaros a Hilal, quien es el presidente de ASU, y a estos estudiantes increíbles y el trabajo que han hecho. Por favor, denle a él y a estos estudiantes una bienvenida y aplausos. Bienvenidos, gracias por venir esta noche.
Gracias, Wazina, realmente lo aprecio. Buenas noches a todos, gracias a todos los candidatos por venir esta noche. Como presidente de la Unión de Estudiantes Árabes en Fortson, les quiero agradecer de nuevo por venir esta noche. Para empezar, hablando de ASU, la Unión de Estudiantes Árabes es una organización comprometida con disfrazar estereotipos negativos sobre cultura árabe y no árabe a través de iniciativas políticas, sociales e culturales. ASU ha sido comprometida a servir al pueblo de su comunidad y empoderar al joven. Hoy en día, es común que la voz del joven, a pesar de su importancia, es a menudo descuidada por los líderes que toman decisiones. Al organizar este foro hoy, ASU intenta abarcar el discurso entre la juventud de nuestra comunidad y nuestras escuelas hacia sus líderes de la comunidad. Hoy ASU firmemente sostiene que los estudiantes y la juventud de nuestra comunidad son los pioneros de una nueva generación que debe ser dada una plataforma para expresarse y expresar sus preocupaciones. Hoy, este foro directamente aborda esas preocupaciones. Como hemos encabezado y recolectado preguntas de nuestros colegas, queremos que toméis una decisión educativa sobre quién votaréis y las personas que harán vuestras decisiones en el futuro. Desde, ya sabéis, las iniciativas de votar, a los foros candidatos, a las protestas y rallies, ASU no ha servido a nadie. Desde el principio, este ha sido una iniciativa estudiantil que ha tomado tanto tiempo y esfuerzo. Así que quiero tomar un momento y agradecer a algunos. Primero, queremos agradecer a Mr. Jack Lindsay and Fortson PTSA por su compromiso con los estudiantes de esta escuela y su apoyo necesario para organizar este programa hoy. También, aunque algunos de nosotros, ya sabéis, algunos de nosotros, los estudiantes, todavía somos demasiado jóvenes para votar, todavía tenemos padres, familiares y colegas que podríamos influir, así que es muy importante. También quiero agradecer a nuestros dos directores de relaciones comunitarias, Alavas Harh and Bulukar, por su trabajo día y noche, realmente aprecio todo lo que ustedes han hecho. También quiero agradecer a nuestros directores de acción cultural, Amber Hashmi, que está en el hospital ahora, ya sabéis, ella ha estado liderando esto desde el principio. Y finalmente, también quiero agradecer al resto de nuestra familia ASU, incluyendo a nuestros dos asesores, Mr. Rashid Badun y Mr. Sam Saab. Sin ustedes, no vamos a tener hoy. Así que muchas gracias, realmente. Gracias a todos, gracias por venir, aprecio el hecho. Y quiero dar el aplauso a nuestro director de acción cultural, Amber Hashmi, muchas gracias.
Buenas noches, damas y caballeros. Más a menudo que no, la juventud es ignorada y se desprenden las creencias en cuanto a nuestro conocimiento y la capacidad de hacer un impacto. Bueno, me asusté al pensar eso. La Unión de Estudiantes Árabes es una organización compuesta de una generación de adultos jóvenes que están dedicados a representar los intereses de los estadounidenses, de los estadounidenses árabes en la universidad, escuela y nivel de la comunidad. Estamos comprometidos con nuestra misión de disfrazar estereotipos y terminar la opresión de los árabes y las comunidades marginadas, mientras permanecemos políticamente activos en el apoyo de la justicia para todos. Tenemos un gran programa en Stokoe, pero antes de empezar, solo quiero tomar esta oportunidad para agradecer al fuerte apoyo de ASU, la directora de Fortson High School, Miss Hiyam Alkader. Y, bueno, si no agradecía a nuestro senador técnico, que está operando en el audio ahora, Mr. Hussein Depru. A nuestro ingeniero increíblemente útil que salvó la vida, Mr. Jason Tipton. Mr. Jack Lindsay of the Fortson PTSA, y a todos nuestros miembros de la sala. Que han sido dispuestos a asegurar el éxito de esta noche. No quiero tomar demasiado de vuestro tiempo, así que, por favor, vuestros moderadores esta noche.
Amigos, familiares, estudiantes y miembros de la comunidad, bienvenidos al foro de los candidatos organizado por la Unión de Estudiantes Árabes y la Fortson PTSA. Mi nombre es Alavas Harh, director de relaciones comunitarias de ASU.
Y mi nombre es Bulukar, también director de relaciones comunitarias de la Unión de Estudiantes Árabes, y seremos vuestros moderadores por aquí. En relación con el foro, nos gustaría agradecer a los candidatos por tomar el tiempo de su agenda de visita para participar.
Ahora, este foro es un poco diferente a otros foros, dado que nuestras preguntas se refieren a los impactos que tienen y el futuro que ayudaremos a crear. Quería señalar que este evento es inútil sin vuestros votos. Así que le pido a todos en esta sala, vengan hoy, el 6 de noviembre, para votar.
A este tiempo, me gustaría presentar a los candidatos del Cónsul de la Ciudad de Dearborn que están en atenciencia a este foro de esta noche. Así que a mi derecha tengo a Miss Nada Alhanudi, Miss Berus Vazi, Miss Erin Burns y Miss Susan DeBajja.
Y a mi izquierda tengo a Mr. Sean Green, Mr. Ramaz Haydar, Miss Leslie Garrett, Mr. Kenneth Paris, Mr. Mike Seri, y Miss Sharon Domage.
Gracias a los candidatos por su participación. Ahora me gustaría explicar el formato para este foro de esta noche. Primero y más, nuestro rol de moderadora es facilitar preguntas y asegurar que todos los candidatos y los atentos reciban igualdad de oportunidad de abordar el público. Nuestros colegas Hussein Depru estarán trabajando en el audio, y Mustafa Alguo estará manteniendo el tiempo y usará el señal para decirles que tienen diez segundos. Y luego otra señal, por Latifah Shahit, para decirles que tienen menos tiempo. Por favor, entiendan que podemos ser jóvenes, pero no tendremos hambrienta de cortar el micrófono si tienen menos tiempo.
También quiero recordar a los participantes y a los oyentes que este no es un debate, es un foro. Así que, por favor, enfíquense en las preguntas y eviten atacar a otros candidatos por sus comentarios.
Cada candidato recibirá un minuto para hacer comentarios y uno para cerrar. Los candidatos tendrán un minuto para responder a cada pregunta preparada por los estudiantes y miembros de la comunidad escolar. Estas preguntas fueron tomadas colectivamente por la Unión de Estudiantes Árabes y son las más relevantes para nuestra organización. Como recordar, todos los candidatos entrarán con tiempo, y si seguimos con el tiempo, la gente Mustafa Alguo y Latifah Shahit estarán levantando el tiempo para decirles cuánto tiempo queda. Por favor, dejad de contar cuando tienen menos tiempo. Le pedimos a los oyentes que mantengan todos los aplausos hasta el final del foro. Pueden haber muchos que prefieran una persona, si aplaudimos cada uno mientras hablan, tendrán menos tiempo para responder las preguntas. Al final, les daremos a todos los candidatos un aplauso. Por favor, silencian su teléfono y salgan de la auditoria si tienen teléfono para llamar. Los candidatos están actualmente sentados, y estos micrófonos están en cada mesa que irán de atrás a la mesa donde están sentados. Así que dejemos que comience. La primera pregunta se dirigirá a Nada Alhanudi, y tendrá un minuto para responder.
Bueno, de todos modos, así que nací aquí, fui a la voluntariado, y fui a Woodworth Middle School, y, por supuesto, fui aquí. Y durante toda esta campaña, realmente quería tomar un enfoque de base. Así que lo que hice fue que golpeé la puerta todos los días. Y con eso, realmente conocí los problemas de los conciliantes, y así es como desarrollé mi plataforma. Y realmente, siempre digo esto todo el tiempo, la golpeo no es solo una estrategia de campaña, es un prerequisite para el cargo político. Y si soy elegida, continuaré ese proceso a través de mi mandato. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. ¿Pueden oírme? Bueno. Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Berus Vazi, y también graduada de Fortson High School. Es el mejor momento de mi vida en los cuatro años pasados que he vivido aquí. Graduada en 1995. Y antes de hablar de mí misma y presentarme, me gustaría verdaderamente agradecerles a todos por lo que están haciendo. Ni siquiera pueden votar, pero están poniendo su tiempo y esfuerzo en un proyecto. Estoy inmensamente orgullosa de ustedes, y estoy orgullosa de ser Fortson J. De tener los productos de Fortson High School. Los estudiantes hacen lo que están haciendo, y siento que tienen una gran tradienda, y estoy inmensamente orgullosa de ellos. En este lado, soy graduada de Fortson, UFM, UD Mercy. Tengo dos hijos que van a las escuelas públicas de Dearborn. Educación y entrenamiento y entrenamiento de trabajo es una de las cosas en las que me enfoco, una de mis plataformas, problemas en los que me enfoco en algunos de los temas que pueden ser importantes para nuestra juventud aquí hoy. Y espero que obtengamos la oportunidad de hablarles de ellos hoy. Gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Erin Burns. Gracias a todos por estar aquí esta noche, y gracias a ASU por organizar. Como mencionó Miss Vazi, siento que la voz del joven es tan importante como educadora, realmente me habla. Así que muchas gracias a todos, estoy muy orgullosa y feliz de estar aquí esta noche. Dearborn es mi ciudad de origen, me interrumpen justo del otro lado de Ford Road de donde estamos esta noche. Y mi trabajo completo siempre ha sido en el campo de la educación. Así que gradué en UFM Dearborn, fui a la escuela de graduación y enseñar en Nueva York City durante unos años, y luego he estado aquí en Dearborn desde 2010. Actualmente trabajo como educadora en la Universidad de Michigan, en el campus de Ann Arbor, donde trabajo con nuestros estudiantes para aumentar la registración de votos y el turnout, organizando workshops de diálogo sobre algunos de nuestros temas sociales y políticos más graves. Así que eso es algo que está muy cerca de mí. También actualmente sirvo como presidente de nuestra Comisión de la ciudad hermosa. Estoy activa en todos nuestros barrios, y estoy buscando traer una mentalidad proactiva a nuestro consejo también. Gracias.
Hola a todos, soy Susan DeBajja, actualmente presidenta del consejo aquí en Dearborn. Fui elegida hace cuatro años para representar a todos ustedes y a sus familias y a todos los residentes aquí en la ciudad de Dearborn. También soy abogada de 13 años, gradué primero en mi clase de la escuela de derecho, y tuve mi práctica en Dearborn también. Y otra parte importante de mí es, no solo nací y era criada aquí, también participé en otras escuelas primarias aquí en Dearborn, Epsom Ford. También soy madre de tres hijos, y tengo una hija de 18 años que recientemente graduó de la escuela secundaria, está en UFM Dearborn ahora. Pero te tengo que decir que definitivamente creo que el poder de la juventud es mucho mayor de lo que se le da crédito. A menudo pienso que, aunque tengo 40 años, siento que todavía estoy en la escuela, todavía soy yo. Pero mis hijos me recuerdan que es un mundo diferente en el que viven ustedes que el mundo en el que vivimos. Así que prometo seguir siendo su voz, espero que ustedes me escuchen esta noche. Y estoy muy emocionada de escucharles, siempre avanzando hacia adelante para ver qué es importante para ustedes, porque ustedes realmente determinan lo que es el futuro. Gracias.
Yo soy Sean Green, y lo que quiero decir es que esta noche, una de las personas más jóvenes en la audiencia es mi hija de 10 años. Ella odia venir a estas cosas, quiero ser honesto, ella lo hace. Pero está aquí hoy porque le dije no mirarme, pero quería que vea a ustedes. Hoy todos somos maestros, porque como dicen, somos los que son el futuro, pero todos somos más el futuro. Y mi hija está aquí para aprender de ustedes y ver qué jóvenes educados y inteligentes pueden hacer. Así que gracias por invitarme.
He estado en esta ciudad durante 11 años, y amo a Dearborn. He estado en esta escuela varias veces cada año para la ceremonia de Navidad Memorial. Estoy orgulloso de haber participado durante los últimos tres años, y es la escuela más hermosa que he visto en mi vida. Es como la universidad. Actualmente estoy sentado en la Comisión Federal de Urbanismo aquí en la ciudad de Dearborn. También he ayudado a diseñar y construir el parque de veteranos y el memorial de la iglesia. Está frente a la biblioteca de Fortson, y he pedido que vote, así que gracias.
Mi nombre es Ramaz Haydar, y no soy un político. Antes de empezar, quiero decir que me siento y apoyo Fortson High School. Y creo que son una gran escuela, no importa lo que suceda. Y tengo cuatro hijos, y todos vieron a Dearborn en escuelas públicas. Como padre y esposo, he estado viviendo en Dearborn durante 35 años, perdón, 33 años. Soy ingeniero, fui a la State, obtuve mi bachelor y mi máster. Y después de eso, fui de vuelta a la Academia de la policía, y gradué. Y me convirtí en comandante de las unidades de reserva, así que puedo ayudaros. Y vine aquí varias veces antes, y he enseñado a los niños sobre las drogas y cómo mantenerse alejados de las drogas. Y si necesitan ayuda, podemos ayudarlos. He estado allí. Así que solo quiero decirles gracias nuevamente a la Asociación de Estudiantes Árabes, o algo parecido. Y luego les agradeceré, muchas gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Leslie Garrett, y agradezco a la Unión de Estudiantes Árabes y al PTSA aquí en Fortson por vernos aquí esta noche. Nací aquí en Dearborn también, gradué en la escuela secundaria de Dearborn. Y puedo decir que mi hijo también ahora participa en la escuela secundaria de Dearborn. Tiene 16, y está involucrado en muchas cosas, incluyendo la orquesta, con la que estaba involucrada como estudiante. Y está involucrado en la scouting, estoy muy orgulloso de que a 16 años, solo ha obtenido el título de scout de la araña. Y la razón por la que llevo esto es que es un testimonio de la historia de mi familia. Somos una familia scouting de tercera generación aquí en Dearborn. Y esa es una de las cosas que hemos hecho una prioridad en el nacimiento de él aquí. En adición a ser parte de las escuelas públicas de Dearborn como familia de estudiante, trabajo para las escuelas de Dearborn, he estado involucrada en la financiación de la fundación de la educación de la escuela de Dearborn. He servido en el board de eso durante años, y estoy orgulloso de continuar mi trabajo como voluntaria y profesional, sirviendo a mi ciudad de origen. Gracias.
Buenas noches, damas y caballeros, gracias a ASU por vernos aquí esta noche. Gracias al personal, a los estudiantes y a la gente que está presente. Mi nombre es Kevin Paris, y lo primero que quiero decirles sobre mí es que fui miembro de la comunidad de la policía, oficial de policía de la ciudad durante más de 39 años, tanto con el Departamento de Policía de Dearborn como comandante, lieutenant. Retiré después de 27 años, y luego otros 12 en la Universidad de Michigan de Dearborn, donde fui el primer oficial de policía contratado allí y llevé operaciones durante 12 años. He casado 37 años, participé en las escuelas públicas de Dearborn, como hicieron mis hijos. Tengo un hijo que es un oficial de policía, y mi hija es un oficial de policía y psicólogo clínico. Y también mi hijo de abuelo, un oficial de policía de otra comunidad, no de Dearborn aquí. Fui uno de esos cajones de la ciudad que estaban en la escuela secundaria de Dearborn. Tuve la oportunidad de ir a Epsom cuando nos mudamos. Estuve en un apartamento en Appline, y también tenía una casa en Appline antes de que me mudara a West Dearborn. Estoy orgulloso de estar aquí esta noche, y espero recibir algunas de sus preguntas. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Mike Seri, y agradezco a ASU, como a todos los demás, por este foro. Es un gran honor estar aquí. He tenido la honra de servir como consejo durante los últimos cuatro años. Puedo decirles que soy graduada de esta gran institución, en 1990, aunque muchos de ustedes no nacieron. Mi madre graduó aquí, mi abuelo y mis hermanos graduaron aquí en los 60. La imagen está en uno de los hallazgos, traté de encontrarla la última vez. Así que todos mis hermanos graduaron aquí, y mi hermana también, así que es una honra venir aquí. Puedo decirles que en Sales, donde he estado durante muchos años, también volví a la escuela, y mientras trabajaba y era familia de cinco, y obtuve mi título de derecho, ahora soy abogada. Pero puedo decirles que siempre escucho a los jóvenes, porque en Sales aprendes muy rápido que si no estás aprendiendo y creciendo, estás muriendo. Así que fue muy fácil para mí cuando la Sociedad Social de Justicia de la Universidad de Michigan vinieron a la comisión y pidió que pasara una resolución sobre la orden ejecutiva de la entrada. Lo escuché, lo redacté y lo presenté. Gracias.
Mi nombre es Sharon Dolmage, y me gustaría agradecer a ASU y al PTSA por vernos aquí esta noche. Solo quiero decir que probablemente tenía cuatro años más grande que ustedes cuando empecé a servir a los estudiantes de este distrito. Una de mis primeras experiencias con el servicio público comenzó con algunos principales de Dearborn y un miembro de la comunidad comenzando un comité de diversidad que nos reunimos en la escuela de McDonald's. Y ese fue el Sr. Michael Berry, quien fue uno de mis mejores amigos hasta que falleció, y quien tenía el edificio de administración en el aeropuerto, llamado por él hoy. Y Daryl Donaldson, quien era director, y Jean Brusco, quien era director. Y los tres de nosotros, junto con el PTSA, comenzaron un comité de diversidad. Así que mi servicio a la comunidad va mucho, mucho atrás. Serví en el board de educación durante 22 años, y durante ese mandato pasamos el mayor problema de bonificación, que incluía la renovación de la ciudad.
Así que la primera pregunta, comenzaremos con Nada Alhanudi, y con el resto de los candidatos. La primera pregunta será, ¿qué harían para impulsar el engagement estudiantil, para hacer que los estudiantes participen en los gobiernos y servicios públicos?
Creo que lo que están haciendo ahora es la clave para hacer que la gente participe. Creo que lo que tenemos que hacer no es que nosotros lideremos a la juventud, es que la juventud lidere a la juventud. Necesitamos darle su autonomía, si le damos su autonomía, puede movilizar esas esfuerzos.
Bueh, hay mucho que hacer cuando se trata de eso, pero el primer paso es lo que están haciendo. Sin embargo, a nivel gubernamental, creo que el gobierno puede en realidad reclutar a los estudiantes de un nivel secundario, incluso en un nivel de secundaria, porque ustedes tienen consejos gubernamentales, tienen presidentes, pasan por el proceso electoral hasta el nivel universitario, y ustedes tienen algún tipo de mejora, internación, cualquier cosa que les permita ser parte del proceso político, incluso el proceso legal, para ver si eso es algo que quieren hacer o no. Y, segundo, y lo más importante, estar allí, en realidad, trabajando con nosotros, el consejo gubernamental, en un nivel local, en un alcalde, en un nivel estatal, con el proceso de votación, con el registro de la registración de votos, todo tipo de cosas que ustedes pueden ser realmente los líderes en ellos, porque estamos perdidos en eso, y eso es algo que en realidad estamos careciendo en la ciudad de Dearborn, es que la registración de votos es muy baja, debido a eso. Ustedes pueden ser los principales líderes y en realidad defender eso en un nivel local e incluso nacional. Así que mucho que puede hacer, eso es solo el principio.
Gracias. Esa es una gran pregunta, creo que hay mucho que puede hacer. Algo que comienza con el currículo, ya sabéis, que todos están aprendiendo en la escuela. Tomar las lecciones de eso y convertir eso en su propio activismo, lo que sea que se vea y lo que sea que signifique para ustedes, creo que es realmente importante. Algunos gobiernos locales, algunos consejos gubernamentales tendrán un board de asesoramiento estudiantil, que es algo que creo que sería fantástico. Estoy trabajando en eso ahora mismo en UFM con mis alumnos universitarios. Así que creo que realmente crear estructuras para que los estudiantes sean activamente involucrados y tener, ya sabéis, el eje de los funcionarios electos es realmente importante. Creo que, ya sabéis, aumentar la registración de votos y el turnout, sé que las mujeres legales de votos están en la edad de los estudiantes de secundaria ahora mismo. Así que creo que parte de ese trabajo está siendo construido. Y en parte de mi trabajo de limpieza de los barrios que organizo, he trabajado con estudiantes de Fortson y de Woodworth para hacer que los estudiantes sean realmente involucrados en el futuro de sus barrios y, finalmente, el futuro de nuestra ciudad. Así que creo que tenemos una población de jóvenes realmente fuerte aquí. Y, ya sabéis, están ya involucrados, y podemos continuar haciendo más y aprender de ustedes en cuanto a sus intereses.
Así que, sin duda, creo que esta es probablemente una de las preguntas más importantes que se hará esta noche. Absolutamente, es importante tener a los estudiantes y la juventud involucrados. Y sé que durante los últimos cuatro años he estado haciendo eso. Tenemos la Comisión de la Juventud de Dearborn, que es un grupo de estudiantes de las diferentes escuelas universitarias en toda nuestra ciudad. Y cómo se unen, se reúnen regularmente y discuten qué está pasando en la ciudad y cómo pueden participar. Personalmente, he estado con la comisión varias veces, he estado con diferentes, y esto es durante los últimos años, he estado involucrada con ellos, he participado en sus eventos. Además, hay un comisionado de la ciudad hermosa, y esos son también estudiantes de secundaria que están involucrados. Y están involucrados en el proceso con la ciudad hermosa y lo que es importante para la ciudad. La otra cosa es que también soy la co-ayuntadora de la Fundación de la Educación de Dearborn. Y soy parte de la comisión de préstamos también. Lo que hacemos es dar fondos a los maestros de escuelas públicas de Dearborn para solicitar préstamos, cosas que no están cubiertas por el presupuesto. Bueno, siempre busco esas oportunidades que permitan que nuestros estudiantes participen en la construcción de gobiernos y otras cosas, y continuo apoyándoles.
Estoy de acuerdo con todo lo que dijeron. Pero lo más importante, lo que creo que también tenemos que hacer, es que necesitamos poner un programa de mentorización juntos. Necesitamos tomar a estos jóvenes que quieren aprender más y quieren ser líderes, y mentirles con los líderes que tenemos en nuestra comunidad, para que puedan ayudar a construirlos, enseñarlos, entrenarlos, y ayudarlos a ver, pero también pueden ayudar a educarnos en lo que estamos perdiendo. Porque no soy joven, soy viejo. Y todos pueden educarme en lo que estoy perdiendo en la comunidad desde una perspectiva de la juventud. Así que me gustaría ver un programa de mentorización que ayude a la juventud a ser más involucrada.
Tenemos, hay unas 16 comisiones y comisiones en la ciudad de Dearborn donde los jóvenes pueden participar. Ya sabéis, por supuesto, hay unos pocos, los personas empresariales y las personas con dinero, y están controlando todo ahora mismo. Y no voy a ser tan negativo sobre eso, pero a menos que la ciudad se alcance a esos estudiantes y les dé la oportunidad de trabajar en la ciudad, y trabajar en el Departamento de Policía, y trabajar en el departamento de fuego, ya sabéis, tenemos la mitad de los empleados en la ciudad que ni siquiera viven en Dearborn. Ellos ni siquiera viven en Dearborn. Así que tenemos que empezar tan pronto como sea posible, y tienes que poner a todos nosotros en el lugar. Necesitan darle a cada estudiante la oportunidad de venir y voluntariar, ser un inter, colaborar, hacer algo. Ya sabéis, no estamos conectados con los niños, no lo estamos. Como padres o como funcionarios, estamos demasiado lejos de los demás. Y es hora de volver y traerlos y hablar con estos niños, y sentarse con ellos y ver qué necesitan, cómo podemos ayudarlos. Muchas gracias.
Hola, mi nombre es Leslie Garrett, y gracias por hacer la pregunta. No creo que necesitemos agregar más programas que ya tenemos, aunque, por supuesto, siempre debemos estar abiertos a nuevas sugerencias. Creo que uno de los desafíos es la comunicación. Las personas que están aquí pueden usar canales de comunicación diferentes de las personas que están viendo el video o sentadas en la audiencia esta noche. Necesitamos involucrar a la juventud para ayudarnos a conectar mejor con la juventud. Traer a la juventud al table, en todas nuestras comisiones, y especialmente en el Departamento de Información Pública de la ciudad de Dearborn, para usar todos los canales con los que comunican, ya sea Snapchat o Instagram. Sí, tenemos un sitio web que la ciudad usa, y están en Facebook, están muy buenos en responder cosas en Facebook. Pero hay tantos más canales, y no necesariamente son los que alcanzan a la juventud. La otra cosa es solo ser proactiva y hacer que la información esté disponible sobre las oportunidades que hay allí. Tenemos internaciones en el Departamento de Policía y en otros departamentos de toda la ciudad. Hay más oportunidades para tener internaciones y trabajar con adultos y modelos. Pero necesitamos hacer eso claro a los estudiantes cuando pueden hacerlo. Gracias.
Damas y caballeros, mirando a través de la audiencia ahora mismo, tenemos algunos jóvenes adultos y estudiantes aquí, pero pensad en ello por一分钟. ¿Cuál fue nuestro tasa de graduación hace no demasiados años? ¿Qué tal la primera cosa es quedarse en la escuela y saber que no solo salir a trabajar en el negocio o hacer lo que hizo mamá y papá? Ustedes son nuevos líderes de esta comunidad, y tienen que obtener la educación. Nuestra tasa de graduación ahora es, ¿cuál?, ¿hasta el 93% como era hace unos años. Hay muchos otros comisiones y comisiones que ya han sido mencionados. Sé que tenemos más comisiones que todo el mundo alrededor, excepto tal vez Ann Arbor que ha sido mencionada. Hay internaciones y algo cerca de mi corazón, el programa de exploración de la Policía de la Policía de Dearborn. Necesitamos su representación en nuestro gobierno municipal. Vamos a empezar con el Departamento de Policía, es tan difícil reclutar a personas de la comunidad árabe, personas de la comunidad para empezar. Nací en esta comunidad y fui un oficial de policía porque quería, y paseé el camino para que mis hijos también sean así. Miren a ustedes mismos, involucren en su ciudad, involucren en su comunidad. Gracias.
Bien, mi nombre de nuevo es Mike Seri. Con respecto a esto, quiero decir, creo que he tomado el mismo enfoque que siempre he hecho, y eso es hacer el trabajo hecho, escuchar. Así que lo que hice en mi primer mandato fue que le di al jefe de policía doble el programa de internación en el Departamento de Policía. Y luego eso se transformó en el departamento de fuego, que nunca tenía un programa de internación. El trabajo del gobierno es crear las oportunidades. Entonces, una vez que creé esas oportunidades, tomé al jefe de policía y al jefe de fuego aquí a esta escuela, en cada escuela secundaria, y hice seminarios explicando a nuestros hijos y a nuestros niños, jóvenes adultos, qué es ser un policía, qué es ser un policía. Y le dije a muchos, pueden querer ser un doctor, ¿has visto a alguien morir? Tal vez deberían trabajar en el camión de fuego y verlo. Digan un ejemplo de lo que tendrían que hacer. Estas son las oportunidades que pueden darles a la juventud un engagement. He hecho el trabajo, tomé al jefe de policía a esta auditoria con el jefe de fuego, y eso es lo que tenemos que hacer como gobierno, necesitamos crear las oportunidades para la juventud.
Disculpen, Sharon Dolmage, solo quiero decir que sé que aquí en su escuela tienen un club clave muy activo, y no estoy segura de si tienen un club interactivo o no. Pero creo que esos son todos buenos medios. ways for adults to work with the youth, to try to get them interested in giving back to their community, which is how you become involved in government. And I think that's really the key right there. I think the ASCU is a perfect example, but during, oh, did you say, oh, I'm sorry. During, in August, I interviewed some young adults, very young adults, who were not into the bar scene, and one of the things I would do is create a task force, because one of the things they told me that was lacking in the city was things for youth to do in between, who weren't of high school age and were into the bar scenes. And so we talked about that at length, and I had came up with some great ideas, and actually have their names, and they've been interested in serving.
Thank you for your responses. The next question is, I'm gonna start with Mr. Domage? Domage? Domage, I'm sorry. And the question is, what ways do you believe that the city and the school can work together?
Well, I think they do work together a lot, and I've had that experience having served on the Board of Dress Schools for 22 years. For instance, we worked, they actually helped us pass the bond, different city people work together. But I think there was at one time, I think they could do better, they could hold more meetings. It was very difficult to get the school board and the city together to work together to decide things. They do do some things as far as recreation, but there is a lot more they could do. And there is a committee, it was a community or a city liaison committee, and I served on that most of the time while I was on the board, but it was difficult to get the council and the board together. And I really think, you know, that that should be done quarterly to talk. So services aren't duplicated, and we can offer more and work together better.
The next question will go to Mr. Siri.
Same question, right?
Same question.
Okay. For me, this one was very surprising. Most of the people don't know that it is completely separate, the school funding with the city, but you really gotta work together, there's no way around it. I mean, most people want to come to Dearborn and live here because the schools are good. So we have to work together. What was surprising to me is simple little things regarding recycling. It was a big deal when I found out that there was no recycling in the schools, all these water bottles and all this stuff. So I brought that forward, and it was already, the mayor was already on it, working on it. And they brought it through to the council. We authorized funding, partnered with another contract company out of Ann Arbor, and get a pilot program so we can get recycling in the schools. There's many ways that the schools and the city can work together. Recycling is just one of them, and I have always been open to it. We have to work together because people look at the community as one, and if the schools are not good, they're not gonna come and live here.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Harrison.
Yes, look around at this building. You know, it takes a lot of money to keep this building going. And what about shared services? The city and the Board of Education needs to come together and share services. It costs money to put snowplows on trucks. It costs money to go ahead and have IT, you know, coming into the schools. It costs money to maintain. If you have those services combined, that you have one vendor or bid to go out for a group of people to come back with a cost, that would be both with the city and with the Board of Education, you can share costs and lower the cost for some items anyways. But the use of facilities also, even during the summertime when school is not in session, maybe sharing some activities between the city and publicize it in city and Board of Education newsletters about different uses of the schools. So, you know, there's engineering jobs at the colleges, if you were writing a Ford Motor Company, we need to share services.
Leslie Herrick.
Again, I'm Leslie Herrick. I work for the Dearborn Community Fund, which is a nonprofit that partners with the city and the schools on projects that enhance the quality of life here in Dearborn. I think that the city and schools both have lots of opportunities to partner with each other, as well as to other nonprofits, like the Community Fund, like Access. One of the things that I'm proud to work on is the pockets of perception of student design team, where we bring students from all of the high schools, they're invited to participate in a permanent art, making a permanent art installation that's exhibited. There's one in front of the old city hall, there's one in the new train station. We need to look for these opportunities to partner going forward. Another thing is, again, communications. Making sure students have not only top-down, where we provide information about what we're doing, but asking the students, where can we be more effective in serving student needs? Whether it's through surveys, online, or old-fashioned printed surveys through the schools. We need to get feedback from the students about what they're looking for, for career opportunities and mentorships. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trump, say that question.
Now, schools are crowded. Dearborn Public Schools are a great, great system. Schools are very crowded. Many of my friends put their kids in private schools because there's no room. But that's not, that's not city council's job, like Mike said, I agree with Mike, it's a separate, separate business. But what the city can do, they can help out by improving, like, let's say, help out with the libraries, help save some, help out with some incentive program, like if a kid finishes a book, we'll give him an award. You know, maybe the council approves some overtime for the police officers to help out when, you know, when kids are leaving the school or when parents are dropping them off, but it's a mess. I mean, you go like to Gere Park, you know, it's crazy, you know? So we do have need, city help to get some of the issues with the schools and fix it. But definitely, they're two separate businesses, but we, there is our own to work together to improve these services and be there for the schools when they need us as a city official. Thank you.
Mr. Sean Reed.
You know, I think that the relationship between the schools and the city is really good. I mean, for the last few years, there's been a unity march that's been supported not only by the schools, but by the city itself. I've been happy to march in that, it's been colorful, it's done, it's done every mark of the King Day. What we could do is, the city needs to reach out to the schools more. We need to reach out for education purposes, to show what we're doing right, and stop focus on, focusing on everything, every time we end up in the news in the city, it's like, it's something bad. We need to have the city use the marketing abilities that they have to help focus on the great things that the schools are doing, things like what you young men and women are doing tonight. They should be marketing that more for your purpose and for the school's purpose. So I believe one thing that we could do is have the city help market the schools and what the student youth is doing.
Thank you.
So the third question will go to Council President Susan DeBajal, and the question is, do you believe all areas of our city receive equal representation in Dearborn?
Well, that's a question quite often asked, and I know that I've been to all areas of our city, and people I know feel sometimes underrepresented, or feel that they are not getting the equal treatment that other parts of our city may be getting. But this is what I can promise you. For the last four years, and for every single day that I serve this city, whether as a councilperson or as a resident, I promise to represent every single corner of the city. I think it's important to recognize that we are not just East Dearborn, West Dearborn, the South End, I've lived in different parts of the city, we are one Dearborn. And any individual that asks for your vote needs to be, needs to promise that they're there to represent every single part of us. Now, I definitely will welcome always dialogue. Anytime I felt that there was an area that felt underserved, it was to dialogue that we could figure out what needs to be done and how we could move forward from there.
Thank you, Susan DeBajal. The same question will go to Erin Burks.
Thank you. So I agree, I think this is an issue that comes up a lot, and I've lived in two different neighborhoods on the east end of town, two neighborhoods on the west end, and I think that depending on where you are in the city, the needs may vary, you know, neighborhood to neighborhood. In some neighborhoods, the top concern is traffic safety, in others, it may be air quality, it may be litter prevention, things like that. So it really varies, I think, depending on where you are and what your needs are. On council, I would certainly encourage, you know, town halls with our residents to get a sense of where people stand and what the issues are. I would look at hosting regular office hours, going out into the community and meeting with people where they are in their neighborhoods, where we all kind of live our day-to-day lives in the spaces that are most important to us. And I think in addition to town halls and meeting with people, a lot of cities are starting to implement a process called participatory budgeting, where if a city has surplus funds, residents of all ages and backgrounds can come in and say, we've set aside a million dollars if we were fortunate enough to have that, and people can say, this is what we would like you to specifically use those funds for. So that's an option as well.
And the same question will go to everybody who's ready.
Thank you. In answer to your question specifically, I don't believe that all areas of the city get equal treatment, and that's obvious just through driving from the southeast to the west end of Dearborn. So we can definitely improve in that area on a very big level. Specifically, when it comes to the streets, the industry, the businesses, the services that are offered in specific areas, even on the school level, we can also improve in that. We need more inclusiveness in our city government, we need more diverse representation, which we have, but we need a better diverse representation. We need more transparency in the city, where the city government actually can open up to the public and allow them to know what's going on in there, so the public can be more encouraged to actually be involved in the city and ask for the things that they demand, and they can be more free about it and feel that they're part of the city. As a grassroots candidate, I will be a representation of the people that are not represented here in the city, I will be the representation of the people that are underrepresented here in the city. Because I am grassroots, I'm an ICU nurse, I'm a mother of two boys, and I am you, I am part of this community. Thank you.
The next question will go to Nada Almudia.
I don't, I think it's no secret that affluent areas receive more attention and better care than economically disadvantaged areas. And through my experience this summer, I just, I saw just that. There are some areas that, you know, who, more affluent areas had more pristine neighborhoods, they had better parks, you know, than the South End, and I don't think that's fair. I think we're all taxpayers, and I feel like we deserve the equal distribution of our city services. LaPierre Park and Lovegood should be maintained evenly, our library should be maintained evenly, our pools should be just, Lovegood Pool should be just as important to other pools in our city. I don't feel like that is the case right now, but as your city councilman, that's number one thing I advocate.
Thank you.
And this next question will be for all the candidates, who will start with Mr. Almudia. All right. This question goes, as time to time again, we head over to Havelock, Fordwoods, and LaPierre Park, and we want to dispute disparities. We see cracks in the pavements, tennis courts, fountain ads, no rooms for basketball courts, pools under lock and key, in great contrast to those that we see in the west end, such as Lovegood, Tenneque, and others. How would you plan on addressing this disparity?
So parks and recreation are my number one issue, just because I spent so much time when my child lived there. Every single day after school, I would go, get blisters from the monkey bars, I didn't care, I had so much fun, and it's really important for our well-being. For us, like I said, we are taxpayers, we should, our parks should be maintained evenly. And one thing I noticed with the residents and the pools, it's very convenient to send off your kid to the pool, it's very convenient, it's walking distance, and I want to give those residents that opportunity. If I'm elected as your city councilwoman, I will make sure our taxpayers, our tax dollars go for parks like LaPierre Park, go for parks like Havelock Park, because we're just as deserving as the west end. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. In addition to what Nada had stated, it's a very simple task. Once you know what the budget is for such programs, you're gonna go, as a city councilman, myself for example, to each park and find out where the necessities are, what's needed, and fit it into that specific budget. It's very simple. If we cannot, we have a very rich community here that we can reach out to as well, and we can ask them to be part of it, especially on a community level, if the city budget does not accommodate that. And thirdly, we all, we have wonderful group of people here in our community that help out and do things, so we can also reach out to the businesses that we have here, multiple businesses, and they'll be more than happy to donate and give us much money that's needed to allocate, so we can have everything that's needed. All you need is some focus on that issue, because it matters to our youth, it matters to us, and as a grassroots candidate again, this will be one of the issues that I will be focused on. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a really important issue. I know I grew up sledding down the hill at Havelock, playing at Argyle Willington Park, so this is something that's near and dear to me. I think, of course, you know, we need to, as a council, review our current spending and determine whether or not our funds are being evenly distributed with regard to parks specifically, make an assessment of all of the needs, and create an action plan that is doable, given the level of city staffing that we have at the current moment. So I think that's important. It's also important for whatever that plan is in the next steps, to really be transparent, to be out there for all of our residents to see, whether that's parents and children, prospective residents, I think that's really important, so the people know where we are in the process and what to expect and when. So that's key. And getting back to Argyle Willington Park, which is right across the way where I grew up, for the neighborhood cleanups that I've organized over the past few years, the city actually has put in a whole new playscape, that's also ADA accessible, which is great. So I think we are making strides there. And in addition to making sure that we're holding our government accountable, we also need to take action as well. We planted some trees and beautified it over the past few years.
Thank you. Mr. DeBajal.
So for the last four years, I've been a strong advocate for the south end and for the east end, as well as the west end. Like I said earlier, I grew up in the south end, but I think I'm the only councilmember that still lives in the east end. So with respect to the pool specifically, I was a strong supporter in moving forward and having a new pool being installed coming up next summer at Fordwoods Park. And we're not talking about your regular, just a square pool and that's it, we're talking about something in lines with what we have at Lovegood Park, so we have the slides and the canopies and some splash pads and choices for our families to enjoy over there. At the same time, when the pool at Havelock Park was closed down, we wanted to do something there, so we spent funds, we didn't have as much funds as we do now, this year, we had a lot more funds to budget for, we put in a splash pad over there. We've also allocated funds to redo the tennis courts at Fordwoods Park. I've also, in addition, outside of the parks area, you know, you guys see money being spent in the west downtown Dearborn, I've also asked to allocate more funds, and we've allocated $500,000 next year for Warren Ave.
Thank you for your response. Thank you. Mr. Sean Reed.
This question's actually quite easy to answer. We just need to have a checklist. It's simple. We come up with a checklist to make sure that all parks are treated equally. If it has a basketball court and doesn't have a rim, and none of the ones do, guess what, we'll put a rim on them. If the concrete is broken, we replace it. That's a safety concern more than anything. It's a trip answer. So to make it easy, let's come up with a checklist, and then let's hold people responsible for ensuring that those checklists are held to the standard they're supposed to, so each and every property is treated equally, and everybody in this city is treated equally.
Thank you for your response.
I'll be, I would be a little bit more general, I'll give you a general answer. I would, I think we have serious issues. In addition to the park issues, we are taxing ourselves, insurance base is crazy, you know, senior citizen services, it's not as good as it should be, you know, and traffic, I mean, traffic control, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna push and work on. We have, our children are dying from accidents, and kids are dying from drugs and tax breaks, people are not, are moving out because they cannot afford it. You know, these are real issues. And of course, the parks needs to be fixed. If I'm, if I become a councilman, I would bring in my years of experiences from engineering, which is involved in costing and services and quality, and also I'd bring in my law enforcement experience, 19 years of the sheriff's department, to help out. I'm, you know, we need, we have some serious issues that we have to speak and talk about, but we're not, you know, we're hiding, we're not talking as parents, we're not, and as students.
Thank you for your response. This is there.
Sharon, take your question.
So the question is, how would you plan on addressing the issue of state of parks currently in the east end and west? Would they factor?
Ken and Leslie Herrick. One of the challenges, I think, that we faced the last few years was, as the fight to protect our pools, which are so beloved by our residents, we were fighting to keep them open, I constantly questioned, why was it not built into the budget? Over the years, knowing that at some point, these pools would need to be replaced, there's only so many times you can do maintenance before you have to replace something. And we're fortunately lasted for 50 years. So that's something, first and foremost, we need to build that into the budget, that each year we need to be maintaining or planning to replace and setting aside the funds to be able to do that, any of the equipment that's a favorite of our residents. Another thing is community input. It may be that in one neighborhood, that there is, they would rather have a playscape or some other equipment, or something at their parks, or a baseball diamond, or a soccer field, than in another neighborhood. We need to get community engagement in making those decisions, just not assuming. And first and foremost, always public safety. And first and foremost, always public safety. If there's a trip hazard, if there's not the lighting that we need, we need to make sure that that's replaced. Thank you.
You know, it's already been mentioned that we already have money budgeted for Fordwoods, the new pool facility there, and also upgrades to Loveood Park. There is a disparity, I understand that, but you know, I gotta give credit to the city too, with the combined sewer overflow projects, it's, you know, $312 million multi-year project. We're not gonna be done paying for that until about 2040. It's not gonna be done for another eight to 10 years, the construction, but we're still gonna be paying on that. At least coordinate some of the efforts, like Fordwoods, you know, with the brand-new pool, brand-new facility that's going in there, that you gotta understand that the CSO project came through and they did the construction at the same time, so it wouldn't inconvenience people. Now, 58% of our roads are poor and fair in this city. There's 270 miles of that roadway. So we have work to do. Thank you.
Okay, in regards to this, it really comes down to the council having more strength and authority. So when we fund, we fund it openly, and then we only find out if something's not going right through complaints and residents. So what we need to do is take the ordinances and tailor them to what they call like a line item budget, where we specifically allocate funds for areas that need it based on assessments that are given through. Right now, that's not the way it's working. Right now, we're funding, and then administration dictates which is going on, and which needs to get done first and last. And that's a problem. Another issue is that we wait too long for something to be completely busted before we fix it. And that's a problem itself, we need to see it ahead of time. For example, in the south end, in my first term, I found a waterfall from a resident complaining at Morningside Park, that the fountain was out. But when I asked the questions and went through the process, I found out that it was put out of service because of vandalism eight years ago. I said, well, eight years ago, those kids who did that are in jail now. We need to turn it back on for the other kids. And it's been out, and there's been no problem.
Sharon Dalmage, well, I agree with what most everyone said here, however, the pools in the schools aren't in the condition that the pools in the city were in. And that is unaccounted. There was a preventive maintenance program in place, and later on, they integrated technology where it's a computer program that addresses, on a regular basis, preventive maintenance for all of the buildings, including the pools. And I think that's what needs to be done. And also, I agree with Mike Serini here, that there has to be money dedicated to preventive maintenance and routine inspections and maintenance. You fix it before it's broken. That's the bottom line. And that's my position, and I'll never change that.
The fifth question will go to Sharon Dalmage, and so also go to the rest of the candidates. So as a musician, arts are very important to me. Do you support the funding of performing arts? What was the last show, play musical concert or art show you attended? Do you support the funding of performing arts? And then what was the last show, concert, or art show you attended?
Yes, I do support the arts. I was a strong proponent of the music program and the arts programs in the school. The last show I attended, oh my gosh, I can't even think. My office that I was in was in the Fisher Building, so I did have the opportunity to go to a lot of shows, concerts. I tried to go to the local high school shows, at Dearborn High, I've been to a couple of the ones Greg Visconti put in, I used to belong to the Dearborn Players Guild, but because of my work for hospice on the weekends, I can no longer do that. But yes, I support music and any other form of the arts in theatrical productions and everything else in the city and in the schools.
Well, I definitely support the arts. I believe that any great community has to have this section in their city. If they don't, then you're really lacking. So I think that our city, Michael A. Geigel Theater does a great job, we've allocated funds to that, we also have gotten into a position where it's self-sustaining to promote it, and now it actually regenerates ticket revenue to be put back into there. And I can tell you, I go to the symphony, the Dearborn Symphony, which is great, that we still have that in Dearborn. So in order to be a very well-minded community and person, we need to have arts in their lives. So as a city, that is something that we need to always support and have, continue. As far as the last one I win, I think it's the one at, at the Homecoming. I don't know what the name was, but I watched that, maybe Leslie also. But it was, it was great, and we have to continue supporting our arts always.
Yeah, the last time that I attended anything involved in the arts was down at Homecoming, you know, down there for three years, and it's a great opportunity for everyone to get together and enjoy, you know, the social atmosphere, let alone, you know, having fun, meeting people down there. My kids in particular, we're all involved in performing arts. My daughter in particular won some awards, she was also in the Dearborn Youth Symphony. Both kids were in the marching band, and were heavily involved in the arts. Been to the Performing Arts Center here in Dearborn a number of times, of course, other communities also, but that's not what we're here for, talking about other communities. But definitely support the arts and continue to do so here in the future. Thank you.
I mentioned I work for the Dearborn Community Fund, I also work for the Dearborn Public Schools, and the reason that I work for these entities is because they have such an impact on our city and the quality of life that we have here. I have been working on the Dearborn Homecoming Festival, that's been mentioned, for the past seven years, I've been one of the key planners of Homecoming. And the reason that I do that is because arts, culture, and music, and food bring people together, no matter what street you grew up on, no matter how old or young you are, those are the things that bring us together as a community, and that's why I work there. I am a member of the Dearborn Symphony Friends, I do fundraising for the symphony, I've been doing that for many, many years. And one of my key platform ideas is I'd like to develop a long-term cultural plan for the city of Dearborn. We do a lot here already. We have seven galleries between our universities and the libraries and art space, the old city hall. We might have an opportunity to add an event that brings people here every year, just like Ann Arbor has the Art Fair and Grand Rapids has Art Prize. I'd like to explore that opportunity as a revenue source and a community builder for our city. Thank you.
I think the last show I watched is when Mr. Baydo was wearing, whatever he was wearing at, at some high school. And that was, well, I think I watched Bring It On, is that what you're saying? So I was selling tickets in the booth outside. And my daughter, Shelly, who's one of, also members of the theater and also in the marching band, and also the Michigan Orchestra, and I know many students are involved, I support it, I sponsor so many events, you know, this is something, that's the least anyone can do to entertain himself or herself, or to bring some culture back, and, you know, just to relax and enjoy the music. So I definitely, you know, I think the city probably has, there is room for the city to help, to help with these programs, bringing in some singers from outside, some, they do jazz festivals, they do a little great job, some businesses don't like it, you know, I think it's great to have a jazz festival on Michigan Avenue. So I am for, you know, helping out and supporting anything that has to do with theater and entertainment for our kids so they can, you know, they can be stars.
The last show I saw was just a few weeks ago, when the United States Air Force Band came to the city and performed, and it was fantastic. When we talk about art in my family, if you came to my home, you would see plenty of it on the walls, but none of it is store-bought. It's artwork that my mother has done, that I have done. My mother was an art teacher. My future mother-in-law was a music teacher. I took shop, in metal shop in high school. These are arts. There's culinary arts, which was what I majored in in college. Art is such a broad term, and we've gotten away from it, because when we get away from arts, from music, from dance, from paint, from drawing, from finger painting, from expressing ourself, we're taking creativity away from our youth and away from ourselves. So I support the arts 100%, because growing up, I was an artist, and I'm still an artist. I paint today, I draw today, I sing with my little girl when we dance in the living room, because we support the arts.
So I'm a strong supporter of the arts. I think without the arts, we would all be empty shells. The last shows I've watched recently were the Dearborn Symphony, which I have always supported their fundraising efforts, and more recently even, I've watched a few shows that are directed by Rashid Baydo, Hairspray in Aladdin, I think the last time I saw him was wearing their prince outfit. But I think it's wonderful that we have those types of programs in our city. I'm also supportive of the Dearborn Players Guild. And why I think it's important is because you get youth engaged in something other than just what we consider your STEM programs or academics. You want them to be able to creatively, creatively express themselves, because a lot comes from them. I also, through the Dearborn Education Foundation, I've supported a lot of grants and approved grants that support these types of programs. Again, I'm a strong supporter, and I hope that we can continue to do that, and I hope funding on a national level continues, because it's absolutely necessary.
So as everyone else mentioned, I'm also, of course, a strong supporter of the arts. Aladdin was the last play I saw here in the city, and it was amazing, reminded me of some of my own failed attempts at acting when I was younger, but the students did a wonderful job. And, you know, I grew up taking dance classes at the old civic center, which many in the room might be too young to remember, but really a great experience for me. So I would love to see, you know, arts classes, dance, music, painting and drawing, in all of our schools as much as possible. I think that's huge, especially for our young kids to have that as part of their development growing up is really key. You know, we also have art space just across the road, a space for kind of up-and-coming artists, and I think it's great to really build upon that and connect those folks with our youth, so that they can see what some of their future opportunities with regard to that type of creativity might look like. And throughout the city right now, we have creative spaces. In addition to art space, we have Green Brain Comics, we have sculptures in some of our public spaces, and the DIA even sprinkles some of their art prints throughout town. So it's great to see that, and I think there's more that we can do to build on it.
Definitely, along with everyone here, I am 100% supporter of the arts, and integrates it to our cultures and the diversity that we have here in our city. And it allows the students and the young minds to actually just embrace something beyond academics, like President Susan stated. The last concert that I attended was my son's at Bryant's, and hopefully a little bit is done as well in Howard. And I love Yanni, and I love that classical music as well. I think there's a lot that can be done as well in that area. We are doing a good job on a local level, but we are not integrating our services on, between the junior high, high school, and the college level. I think colleges have a lot of programs that we can integrate to, and the city government can, work together with private practices to promote these kinds of services for our students, and I think that is much needed. All we need to do is actually be the connection and be the mediators between them. And on a funding level, we are doing a good job, but then again, I say it, we have a rich community we can reach out to and they'll be more than happy to help us.
First, I want to answer the question. I'm definitely supportive of the arts. The last show I went to was Rashid's. My childhood revolved a lot with arts. I played violin since I was in elementary school. I was in the drama club in Fortson, I loved it. I used to be on stage right here, I would like play the violin, I was like fifth chair because I was horrible, I never got better, and I feel bad for my parents who had to hear me practice, but they still encouraged me. And one thing I really got from it was a different culture. I got used to like classical music, classical movies, like just through being in these programs, and it really opened my eyes, and it really opened my intellect. So it's very, very important to maintain the arts and fund them, but unfortunately for me, it was cut junior year. The drama club and orchestra was cut, and those were my, that was my thing back then. And it really gave me something to look forward to, and I really would hate it if we'd have to do that again with our youth.
All right, now, thank you guys for your responses. The next question is, and it's for everyone, but we're gonna start with Mrs. Almody. And the question is, Dearborn is comprised of many departments and department heads, which oversee the day-to-day operations of the city. For decades now, these department heads have remained the helm with very little, with very little change and innovation or progress. Many feel that these individuals are simply out of touch and do not reflect the change in our city's number brands. What will you support change?
So the first thing is obvious is, Dearborn is a melting pot. We have many immigrants from all over. I met someone a month ago from Sierra Leone. We have Latina immigrants, Irish immigrants, but one thing that's really important is to keep our staff diverse, to, for us to serve the needs of those minority communities. So that's the first thing we need to do, and maintaining that diversity, getting rid of ageism. A lot of jobs are completely exclusive to experience, which means the older generation, no offense, but let's give our youth an opportunity to get involved as well.
Thank you for your responses.
Can you repeat just the question? I know that you...
So the question is, right, what will you support change?
In this city. These were one of the main issues that I actually discussed in my candidacy here, in my campaign, is the non-transparency and non-diversity in our city government. From the fact that we have seniors that continue to be re-elected without much challenge, I think this year we're gonna be seeing some challenging competition. Whomever you are voting for, it's a healthy way of making things happen. However, we need more people to be encouraged to apply for these commission seats for the department heads, we need to have more diversity for qualified candidates, whether, and every ethnic group and diversity, that needs to happen. We're struggling to make the city councilmen and women a diverse group of people, let alone the mayor's, or the city clerk. I believe we're still struggling to do that as a community. We need to work together, we need to be more open-minded, less biased when it comes to that, so we can work together. This happens with the culture that we live in, and we need to continue to open up to different ideas and different cultures so we can grow into a more unified Dearborn.
So I think one step we can take is obviously to ensure that all of our job postings are widely accessible, and then they're being posted, you know, in spaces that are high-traffic digital spaces where a lot of our residents are present. So I think that's key. I would also love to look into launching some internship programs for our high school students, also our college students that go to Dearborn and Henry Ford College. I think we have a lot of great youth potential here in the city, and some of it is untapped with regard to connecting our young people and their wonderful ideas and skills and talents to what goes on in city hall, even thinking about the Department of Public Information, having some young people there to design graphics, to do social media postings, that really connect with people across the city, particularly young people. I think that's huge when we think about how we're communicating and who our target audience is. We want to make sure it's as broad as possible and that it's inclusive, so I think that's key. You know, also looking at some part-time jobs in city hall, again, perhaps for high school students, but particularly for our college students, to allow them those engagement opportunities and to see those careers.
I agree a lot with what Erin stated. Now, as the council president, I'm the department head of the council office, so I'm in charge of hiring and hiring staff. And I could say that, ever since I took that position, I think I hired the first two Hashabine girls inside our council office. And I gave one opportunity to an intern, a student intern, so that we could start mentoring and giving these kids, our youth, the experience that they lack in, and sometimes have a difficult time getting jobs. So number one, I do believe in diversity, and that we're a melting pot, and we need to have our staff reflect that. Number two is about creating these opportunities and this experience. Internship is a great way to allow new people to come in, start learning, to, and to be mentored, and to earn the experience that they may later need to leave these positions. The other thing I want to mention is about posting. I have spoken with the administration during this time, asked about posting these jobs, opportunities on other sites, not just in the Press and Guide or on our city website, but maybe through the American News and other avenues that we...
So, being the only veteran up here, I'm very involved in veterans organizations. And one of the things that we have in the American Legion is three programs that other municipalities are using very heavily. One is called Boys State, one's called Girls States, and one is the Student Trooper Program. These programs, Boys and Girls State, are used to show how municipality and how governments work, all the way from the lowest level of government to the highest. These young, you take positions in this program, and are elected, and are running small municipalities, small states, even parts of the federal government during this week-long program, and then they go back to their communities, and the municipalities scoop these young men and women up and use them as interns and use their knowledge and their leadership. I would like to see that type of program partnered in this city, so we can take the youth that we use here and help guide them to... youth that we use here and help guide them to further the knowledge that they learn.
Thank you for your response.
Well, because we are not represented in the city, we do not have a good representation in the city, as an Arab American, I am not, I don't think we have a good representation in the city. The jobs in the city for Arab Americans, there aren't like 30 jobs or 40, I don't know how many, I heard it was 7%. So out of all these jobs, all the heads, department heads in the city, like eight and nine of them don't even live in the city, and also, none of them is Arab American. Inspectors, the law office, I'm not, I'm not going to be so negative and talk bad about anyone, but I don't think, I think we deserve better opportunity, you know. There is no, right now, like ego right now for any issue, for, you know, to, to request inspection or something. Everything is difficult. Nothing is easy. As a taxpayer, as a resident in this city, I demand to be treated equally and have a good representation, and my voice is heard.
Thank you for your response. This is Erin.
I think I'm the only candidate that actually has worked inside City Hall. I worked in the Department of Public Information for five years, and while I was there, I heard from residents every day, I answered the phones, I was on the front line, and heard about the challenges and things that our residents wanted to, to do and who they needed to work with at the City Hall. But one of the things that we didn't hear from was the employees. I think we need to institute an employee suggestion program, whether it's anonymous or with names, and rewards for employees who, when we implement their suggestions to make our city services better, or make it easier to do business with City Hall, or make it more clear to the residents how to get involved with the city. We need to enhance our communications, I mentioned this earlier, where everybody can easily find out how to get involved on our different commissions. Sometimes it's who you know, because you don't even know where to find it on the website. So we need to make our communications more clear and use more communication channels. Tours at City Hall, we used to do that with Cub Scouts and, and school groups, and we kind of lost that. We need to invite people into City Hall to see how we operate, maybe a day on the job for students to see what it's like to work in a different department.
Folks, we've got to ask some hard questions here, and I'm going to say something that it needs to be said. Why don't we have representation of minority or underserved population within our police fire department? And I'm going to bring this up because, you know, once you look countywide, Wayne County Sheriff's Department, and we have Zach Hadar here that is a volunteer, there is a lot of Arab Americans that work for the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. How come we don't have the same numbers in our own population of the police department? Let's look at some of the root causes why people are not applying, or if those that are applying, in fact, why? We have to learn that. You know, it was a year ago, April, after we had some shootings in December and January, a year and a half ago, that the Department of Justice said within one year we would have some reports about the Dearborn Police Department, hiring practices, training practices, and retention. I have not seen that report, it's been a year and a half. It was going to be out in one year.
Thank you for your response.
Okay, just to stick on the question so everybody understands, the department heads are appointees of the mayor, which means we have no control over them. And believe me, I know because I had a couple of them tell me that they don't work for the council, that's their job is to work for the mayor. So that's a problem, and that's because it's inherent in the charter, okay? Other cities don't do it the same way. For example, the legal department serves all seven council people and the mayor. Now, as a lawyer, I can tell you that's a conflict, that's a problem. But in other cities, what they do, the legal department attorney for the city, is has a two-year term instead of four years. So what happens is the council has more control over it. I can also say, say to you that on the council, I have referenced the charter when we have commission appointees, and the charter indicates that the council must make sure that these appointees most reflect the citizens that it serves. And some council people said, what does that mean? Well, I think it's very simple. I mean, we have to do a better job. We have, as, as someone had stated earlier, we have many people that are appointees in other cities.
Sharon Dolmetsch. First of all, I think that we absolutely have to recruit better from different groups. And I know that it has to do with job postings and everything, but I also think that it has to do with internships and with co-op experiences at the high school and college level, and I do agree that the people should reflect the population that it serves. I also want to say, I think one of the questions said that it had to do with how would you make sure they stayed in touch? Well, since the mayor appoints them, as the mayor, I believe that the mayor should require that they all belong to a service club and volunteer in the community so that they understand the people they're serving and working with. It's one thing to be working alongside and volunteering with somebody, and you don't even live in the city, but when you are volunteering, you are...
This concludes our question portion of the forum. Thank you for attending tonight's forum. We have Ms. Nada Al-Nuri, Ms. Raisa De, Daisy, Ms. Erin Burns, Ms. Susan Navaja, Mr. John Green, Mr. Ramiz Hayr, Ms. Lovey Herick, Mr. Kenneth Herick, Ms. Sharon Dolmetsch, and Mr. Mike Green. Please, the members who are coming ASU, PTA, and Al.
There are any closing statements, we'll restart with Ms. Al-Nuri.
So when I look around this room, I see a bunch of delicious activists. Rather than giving you a closing statement, I want to give you a piece of advice, and that advice is what I hold true every single day. First thing, the most important thing you're going to ever take from your life is to read. Read like your life depended on it. There is nothing more powerful than the knowledge you gain from a book, and there's nothing more intimidating in this world than someone with pure intellect. Another thing, fight. Fight like your life depended on it, but fight with courage, fight with diplomacy, fight with empathy, but most importantly, fight with heart. Fight for the fact that you, fight for the fact, the sheer love that you have for justice, the sheer love that you have at cost. And stay true to yourself. You're going to come across people and situations that are going to try to compromise your character, but if you rise above it, you will never, ever, ever feel alone, and you'll always feel complete. Thank you.
I love you, Nada. You're, you're amazing. I love you. When I was her age, I, I didn't have what she had, so I know she has a very good future ahead of her. As a 40-year-old mother, I, when I went to go for some council, the first two people that I had to convince were my sons, that were ready to do this, that were ready to fight, that were ready to give up and, and ready to sacrifice so we can give back to the community that gave us so much. And they were right on board, and they continue to be. Sometimes I'm not encouraged, but they encourage me. So our youth are number one. And for me, one, one thing that I'd like to give to, to all of us here, we can all make a difference. My only disappointment that I'd like to share with you is the low voter registration turnout we have in our city, and I think we all have a very big responsibility to carry that on. The city government does not do the best job in encouraging that, but we as a community need to step up and need to take the voting process very seriously, so the issues that matter to us the most, the grassroots people, actually will get addressed with our votes. Thank you.
Thank you again, and to the ASU for hosting. As an educator, my experience has always been that the young people I work with teach me so much more than I could ever teach them, so I appreciate you and thank you so much for being active and for taking this step to host us tonight. We really appreciate it. I decided to run for city council because I really wanted to focus on creating results that people can see and experience throughout the city. Our parks, our pools, our libraries, neighborhood beautification. In my time with the City Beautiful Commission, the most meaningful and exciting part for me has been organizing the Eastport Neighborhood Cleanup over the past four years, getting to work with young people at Fortson and at Woodworth, our business owners, homeowners, people of all different ages and backgrounds. That's really exciting to me. And as a council member, I'll be accessible to everyone from one end of the city to the next, making sure that every person is seen and heard and valued, and really looking forward to advocating for all of our residents across town as a city council member. So thank you all for being here, and I ask for your support and your vote on November 7th. Thank you again.
So a few years ago, when I decided to run, what inspired me were three kids at home, my, my children, Claudia, Joel, and Adam. And much like I see the parents here who are probably here because they have some connection to a student here, you know, you guys are everything in the world to us. And people often ask me, when I make a decision on city council, what is my measure? Big part of my measure, besides being able to put my head at night and sleep and knowing that I did the right thing, is, is it the best thing for my children, for all of our children? You know what our parents did, especially as immigrants? When they came here, they really laid the foundation for someone like me to be able to run. And what we're doing now, we're trying to build upon that foundation so that you guys can make it better for our community and abroad and moving forward. I hope that I can continue to inspire you guys as you have inspired me. I will continue to be your voice and your advocate. I believe strongly in our youth, because everything that I've done in my life really has been inspired through my children and through you guys. I will continue to listen to what you guys have to say because it's important, and I hope you guys will keep me in your path.
So my term of service started when I was 20 years old, when I enlisted in the United States Navy. At that point in my life, I decided that I wanted to represent our country and defend democracy, and that term of service has not stopped me. I want to represent each and every one of you honorably like I did when I was in the military. I called a friend of mine before I decided to run, and I asked this person, what is the hardest part about this job? And this person told me, and I'm not going to say who it is, that the most fulfilling part is you know you're making a difference. The hard part is taking the hits. This person's right, and this person has done this job honorably. My daughter told me, run, Dad, do what's right, and I'm doing this because I love this city. I love every aspect of this city, and I want to leave a great city for my daughter, like the seniors have left for us, a great city as well.
I want to thank the ASU for this opportunity. I don't think we should leave Suzanne by herself at the city council, we need more women in the city council. So I support all the ladies over here. I support more opportunities for ladies in the city government. And the other thing is for, for students, is that good? So for students, you know, and for parents, you know, please, you know, when you go home, tell your families, this guy, his name is Ramiz Hayr, he's a people god, okay? He's an engineer, he's with the sheriff. I stood 19 years outside on the streets, and you guys see me all in front of the mosques and churches volunteering, days and nights. When Terry Jones came here, I was in front of his face. When other people came to Warden Avenue, I was right there with the sheriff department. When 9/11 happened, I was on the bridge, helping immigration. I've been there, you guys keep knowing me, please vote for me, give me a chance, vote for all of them, whoever you want to vote for, but give me a chance. Thank you very much.
I'm Leslie Harret, and again, I thank the ASU and the PTA for having us here this evening. I'm running for city council because this city is my backyard. I grew up here, and I've dedicated both my professional and my volunteer hours to things that enhance the quality of life here in Dearborn, and I want to continue that work. I work for the Education Foundation, I work for the Dearborn Public Schools. I live in a historic district, I'm raising my son, attends different high just like I did. These things should tell you something about me and how passionate I am about the good things in our community and wanting to maintain them and make them better. I've been advocating for our residents, I spoke in front of the DE, Department of Environmental Quality about air quality, not because it was part of my job or I was even thinking about running for office, but because it was important to me. When I, as a member of the Sierra Club, heard about that opportunity, that's the kind of thing that I do, and that's the kind of thing I want to continue to do for my son, for our neighbors, and for our friends across the city. I want to continue to advocate for you. Please elect me to city council, Leslie Harret. Thank you.
Folks, I know I emphasize my years in public safety, but I got to tell you, you know, there's some things that maybe want to run. Part of it was our consolidation of dispatch project that both, probably none of you in this room probably know anything about, asking six other communities to come under one roof and we dispatch police, fire, and EMS. Happily involved in that for a period of time. I've attended most of the council meetings over the last couple of years, more importantly, the budget meetings. I don't think I've missed one budget meeting in the last couple of years. Guess what happens at the end of January? We start our budget process. I'm familiar with the functionality, I'm familiar with the process, I have municipal and city experience in budgeting, I have a lot of experience to bring to the table, and I want to serve again. Number one concern in this city from border to border is traffic enforcement. I've had a traffic enforcement plan out there for a period of time involving part-time officers instead of paying overtime, and guess what? The mayor just announced it at a public forum this last week that he has traffic enforcement coming with full time offers with the revenue paying for that. I am Chair of the Traffic Commission for the city of Dearborn. Thank you.
Folks, I just want to thank ASU for this forum, and I think that it's, this is a very, very serious time in our city, and I'll be honest with you, we need to grow out. The opportunities, the city is changing tremendously, economic growth is, is growing. We know we have an $80 million project from Ford, just in Michigan, we have $1 billion in reinvestment here in the rest of our campus. So people are knocking on our doors. Now more than ever, we need strong leadership that can deliver results. I believe if you look at the record, I tell people, you want to know about me? Go to CDTV, pick any meeting in the last four years, pick any time you want and watch for seven or 10 minutes, see who's asking the questions, who's holding people accountable. I have done it. I really would love to continue to serve, and I'd do it without your support. I'm asking for your vote, please, Tuesday, November 7th. Thank you.
I would also like to thank the ASU and the Dearborn, or the PTA Council for having us tonight. I want to say that I started my career of volunteering with PTA, and for 30 years, actually, was at all different levels. I was a scout leader, I am a nurse by trade, and I also have a degree in business. I continue to volunteer with Rotary, with many Dearborn Goodfellows, many other organizations, but I also still work with our youth through the Dearborn Education Foundation, and I mentor students at Henry Ford College. And I have the experience of working with large budgets and being able to make tough decisions, and I have proven to be able to make tough decisions, but I have a really soft side as well, and I want to continue to work with my community. Thank you, and I would like your vote.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight's forum. Again, please give a round of applause to our speakers. Don't forget to go on November 7th.